We will get started. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I'd like to call the Mount Anthony Union School District Board Meeting. The order. I am gonna run the meeting tonight because Steph is remote. And so it's quite often easier to run from being in the room as opposed to being remotely. But Steph, Steph Mulligan is here. One thing that was requested of us for minutes taking purposes. Before we need a meeting is to just make note of the board members who are here. So I wanna do that. First, we have Steph Mulligan joining remotely. Scott McManus, myself, Dave Frederickson is here. Leon Johnson is here. Kristen Olmstead is here. Katie Aiken is here. And Beth Wallace is here. So that's for raiser. Just to, sometimes people are off the screen and are recording can't hear. So we're trying to be a little bit more vocal when it comes to identifying people to help, help him when it comes to taking the minutes. So to get started with the agenda, first on the agenda is public comments. Do you have anybody remote? Okay.
I don't think there's anybody remote.
Remote, all right, right now. Then we won't start with you here in the room. If you could just identify yourself.
I'm in Benton, and I've been a school bus driver for about three and a half years. And I just wanted to make some comments. I've printed out something on the board once a pocket of it. Just the main thing is the school bus conduct and our care of safety. I started working as a school bus driver in Benton part-time at a summary retirement job about three and a half years ago. Enjoyed being able to keep it in these schools. And there was a lot of great and respectful students on the school bus, but the number of disrespectful and bad behavior students taking an unsafe drive or fully focused has increased. Most of the behavior is from the middle school students, probably over the sixth grade. Typically, in the past, when students were written up for a bus conduct report after many verbal warnings, there were consequences depending on the severity and the number of reports. When a student had three conduct reports, they would typically lose their bus privilege. The duration was weighed against the severity of the behavior. This year, after writing multiple conduct reports, some students had no consequences. Therefore, the behavior continues, and other students see no action being taken and add to the unwilling disruptive behavior. Examples throwing multiple objects at other students standing in seat area, shouting foul language at other students, hitting other students, taking other students' property, vandalism of the bus, not sitting safely in the seats. Bus drivers have seven mirrors to check, especially when approaching a pickup or drop-off location. For every second, we check the destruction on the inside rearview mirror. It takes our focus off the road and the surrounding areas. With this increase, bad behavior and distraction does not allow me to focus safely on driving before I resign. Bus drivers are aware that schools may be short-staffed. But in my opinion, the best way to purpose behavior is for parents or the disruptive students to back the school staff and the bus drivers to make private students to and from the school as safe as possible and perhaps retain it higher more bus drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Worton. Just to let you know, it's customary to not respond and get into a dialogue. But I, I think what we'll do is we'll take this away as something for us to look into.
Right.
Get, get, get a better understanding of what's happening as far as policy and how that's being, how, how things are being followed, and then we will.
Okay, appreciate that.
Talk about it as a board.
Okay.
Once we get that information. And I also wanna thank you for the years of service you did provide in keeping kids in the district safe.
I understand there's a new policy being going into effect. Because I, I've made our conduct reports, and this would be like the fifth or sixth ones. And, and the school doesn't have the previous copies. I fortunately make pictures of all these. I've had to make additional copies and forward it to the school. So it needs to be a better system to keep track of the amount of violations going on with the students and keep, you know, keep track of the behavior.
Thank you. And we'll take that as a, as a tip for it. Yes, sir.
Question. Do we have cameras on the bus?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
And I'm Sarah Beth Ward. I'm Bob's wife.
Okay.
And I just wanna say that if anybody knows Bob, he has the patience of Joe. Like he, he, nothing rattles him most of the time. Lately, he has come home from work, and it's, I can see that he's like really rattled. I mean, he wants these kids to get to school safely. I have a granddaughter here who was on the bus. She's upperclassman now, so she doesn't ride the bus anymore. But she tells me things like what happens on the bus. She'll be sitting there, and all of a sudden, an object just goes flying, you know, across. How is he supposed, how is any of these bus drivers supposed to drive when the kids are not safe? They won't stay in their seat. Most of them, like he said, they are wonderful. They're, they're wonderful kids. It's not that many. But the ones that are there, something has to be done about them. It's just, I, I, I have another granddaughter that's gonna be going into kindergarten this year. The thought of her being on a school bus that's not safe makes me really, really sad, really unhappy. You're, you're, the kids are losing a wonderful bus driver. He has patience. He's taught, he's turned a lot of these kids around. And they were younger. They were, you know, maybe having issues and stuff like that. People sit down with them. People talk with them. Next thing you know, they're saying, thank you, Mr. Ward. Thank you, bus driver Bob. And he has turned some kids, not their lives around, but he has turned their behavior around. And the fact that you're losing a bus driver like him is just not a good thing.
Appreciate the, the comments. Thank you.
Okay.
My comment is far less serious.
Can we?
Yes, Mike Cutler Bennington. Mine's just more of an observation. I work at CAT TV, so we have the pleasure of filming graduations. And it really hit me this year that there was just one board member present. And I know everyone's busy and has other commitments. But I looked at last year's graduation, and it was the same board member also there. Leon has been there for the past two years by himself. I just hope, and other people said this when we were talking after graduation, it just looked a little lackluster at the stage. Three people, one board member. I just hope that maybe next year, rotate through board members and have a couple there. I know you have Arlington now, middle school celebrations, so just.
Good for them.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, any, did anybody other? Oh, there's no one but Trump. Moving on to item two on the agenda is finance. We have Trevor's treasurer's report, which was in the packet. Yeah, I got a motion to accept the treasurer's report for June of two thousand twenty-four.
I motion to accept the report for June two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So that was unanimous for minutes taken. Item B on the agenda under finance is donation to the class of two thousand twenty-five. That letter was in the revised packet that was sent out later this afternoon, or earlier this afternoon. Any information that we should know as a board on that, or we move to accept?
It was not an expected. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Not an expected donation, but because it is specific, specifically identified to be for the class of two thousand twenty-five. If the board decides to accept that, we will actually put it in the student activities account for that to be managed at the school level. It will come into the general fund right here, and Coleman will put the money.
So this, I was, that was one of my questions was, is this a reoccurring? It's just appeared?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, no, I had reached out to the school to see if it was a family member, you know, of a student that's coming up graduating that perhaps like that's why they were making the donation. None of the administrations are, they're not for the year with trust, so.
Okay.
Right, well, donation.
So I, I assume the action that's requested is that we move to accept?
Acceptance.
Yeah, I have a motion to accept the donation for class of twenty-five. Do we have a motion by Leon and a second by Dave? All those, all those.
It's, it's, the question that, I mean, it wasn't a lot of details in the, in the money. For the person that's so far along that line. I read what was in there. And I don't know, that means by thirty years, I don't think I remember hearing a donation included in the pamphlet. Isn't closed in this, from this particular person.
No, I've seen them, but I've never seen one for other things, but not one that large. If, if that money doesn't get spent, does it roll to the following, to, to another year? Does it always get spent?
Well, I can imagine they would spend it, but I don't consider what their class expenses typically are.
Okay. That's, again, I don't.
And I would recommend that they would expend it, so we didn't.
Right, this doesn't specify whether it rolls over. So there's a lot of fundraising and stuff that has to happen, which this would help. minimize. That's true. Got it. Okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donation as described in the packet?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And unanimous? Item three on the agenda was operations, a bid summary. I do have a summary. It's in my bag.
This is compiled by Holly Anderson, Director of Operations. Twelve contractors were identified in contact regarding the removal and installation of flooring in the nineteen eighty-four wing of the high school. The scope of work will include two floors and respective stairwells. Contractors were invited to visit the site and review the scope of work with MNU Director of Facilities, Tony DiOfrillo, and submit pricing to complete the work. Of the twelve contractors, two submitted bids. Toxie Floor of New England, bid submission fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents, and Concrete Impressions, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. The project estimated cost summary is to order two Concrete Impressions for fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Bid provided by Concrete Impressions has been determined to be comprehensive and complete. Pricing is a fixed bid amount. Final color selection will be determined by directors. I'd make a recommendation for the Mount Anthony Union School of Directors, Board of Directors, is to avoid the contract Concrete Impressions and authorize expenditures from the approved budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five and the general fund for up to fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to cover the scope of work as outlined in the project estimated cost summary. The scope of the work will commence after July one and shall be completed during summer break. Its substantial completion achieved prior to October, August fifteenth.
Excellent, okay. May I have a motion to worth a bid to Concrete Impressions in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to install flooring in the nineteen eighty-four wing of the high school? And just for clarity, this is work that was budgeted. Was, was budgeted. We have a, we have a motion by Leon. Second. Second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstaining? Okay, again, unanimous. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is consent agenda. We have minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of absence, resignations, and nominations. If there is no objection, I would ask that we move them all together as part of the, as a single consent agenda item and not break them out. Is there any objection? Are there any objections? So may I have a motion to, to move the consent agenda, which includes minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of absence, resignations, and nominations? May I have a second?
Second.
So motion by Beth and a second by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And any abstentions? Item five on the agenda is policies. The two policies tonight that we're looking to adopt. Oh, and I, the first one is number four, zero, zero, one, harassment of employees. And I have a motion to adopt the, the policy as was written in for packet. I have a motion by Leon. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Katie. Any discussion?
Hi. Sorry. Go ahead. I just wondered where on the human resources.
Yes.
Page that designated.
I'm sorry.
Where on the human resources page on the website would the design needs be listed?
Just I couldn't find it. And the links in the document led me to North Carolina.
I got your email today, and that sort of, taking that up with our way.
Okay, thank you.
The question was where are the design needs for this policy?
Where, where on the website will they be listed? So it says on the policy that the design needs for each school will be listed on the, on the website. So if you have a complaint that you wanna file, you can easily go to the human resources tab on the website. You're up to your top.
I hope that we're hiring a new equity. What's the term we're using in this position? Equity administrator. Not coordinator anymore at Thursday night's SU meeting. So that hopefully will answer a lot of those questions to get this. It, we've been struggling with it as we go through changes in that office. Each school does have designated people. I believe it's all in the student handbook, but I am not sure sitting here where it is on the website. They also have two trained investigators that work at the SU. And now we will have an equity coordinator who is also will be the Title IX Director for the SU. So I don't wanna go and look where it is right now because it may not be on the website yet. They might just say, but I know it is, it is in the student handbook. There are, there are multiple identified for every school.
Same, it should be, it is difficult to get to because it's an HR, it goes to the HR department. Be listed. I don't know whether, but I didn't go on there to move.
Yeah.
This particular time for that. And even if they didn't go that way, it's another avenue in the other reporting process, a mechanism for calling. But yeah, at this, then it should be on the HRs.
And we'll make a note of that for where, and we struggle with this on the website, and everyone needs to understand. Everyone wants, you can only have so many tabs on the front page of the website. Because we, we just had a, a change in school choice in Arlington, and I wanted to tap. We had to remove something to put that tab there. So it's always gonna involve at least one, if not two clicks to, to get to it. So you'll, you'll never see it right on the front page. At least that's what our, our public information coordinator explains to me when I just recently tried to get something else in a more prominent spot in the website, so.
I think because it's internal, you know, it's teachers that will have access to the policy. It's fine for it to be a too quick process. I just wanna make sure that it's in the policy.
Glad to look into it and see where it is. And I will report back to you. No, I mean, I, I try to whenever a question comes up at the meeting, and at the next meeting, answer it. Because that's what I'll do in my classroom, ten forty-nine questions from last night. I mean, last night. Last month's meeting? There was a meeting last night, but there was in Arlington, so. Yeah. Thank you. Any other discussion with regard to four, zero, zero, one?
Well, the only other thing that I noted that I thought was a little possibly unrealistic was under notification. It says that designated employee shall immediately provide a copy of this policy to the complainant and accused individual. And I was wondering how, how that would happen.
Leon, was there any conversation and policy discussions about?
I'm going down the, on the notifications. Big, big policies, procedures.
Yes, on each time.
Five of ten in the procedure part for that. And your question in that area was?
So the third sentence, or the third line is, in addition, the designated employee shall immediately provide a copy of this policy to the complainant and accused individual.
And that's what should happen, so.
I think that's fully be aware of.
So like, the person will be carrying, I'm, I'm just.
Well, they would be carrying, now imagine there'll be a meeting in someone's office.
Yeah, that's, that's what should happen. Yeah, that's, that's telling you what's gonna happen.
Didn't quite understand how about this, like pulling it out of their backpack.
Oh, no, no, that's the procedure that's saying this is what happened. If something like that happened, you're gonna have the other part of the investigation. Then you're gonna sit down, and you're gonna show the people that this is what should be done.
So it's part of the investigation process.
Any other discussion on four, zero, zero, one? Okay, all those in favor of adopting four, zero, zero, one harassment of employees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, item B under policies is number six, one, zero, zero, library material selection. And I need a motion to adopt. Leon, may I have a motion? May I have a second? A second? Any discussion?
For everybody to know, I think this is a well-put-together piece of equipment here in this policy in terms of library medium. With all the things going on around the country, this thing takes care of everything that we need to have in place and so forth along that line. So it's, it's a good piece of.
Along with the admin regs that are there.
Yeah, with the admin regs that go with it and so forth, and spells out everything. So any questions that somebody's been asking around and how to do something, you got it all right here that, that clarifies what it is and how we do things along that line, and who's responsible for doing it. And if somebody didn't like something, they have a way of, you know, complaining about it and a mechanism for handling it.
Well, these were two robust policies, and so there's a lot of work that went into them. So thank you for the work and the rest of the committee, too. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting number six, one, zero, zero, library material selection, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And any abstentions? Again, unanimous. Moving into item six on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Good evening. I'm gonna follow up with some questions from the April board meeting. I believe it was Dave who asked about financial literacy standards. So it is the response from the SBSU Director of Printing and Instruction Assessment. They are using the Vermont Education Financial Literacy Guide as a guide. The district math plan for fi- financial literacy. Okay, let's see. Mount Anthony Union High School will be working on recreating a class that is labeled with standalone financial literacy. Course will be reviewed from the previous financial literacy course offered to reflect current standards. This work is planned for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with the anticipation of being presented the school year of twenty-five, twenty-six. Building a scope and sequence that flows into the skills and concepts for success in the course above. The math committee members in the K through twelve grade band will work on financial literacy skills and standards during the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, with finalization during the summer work twenty-five. A plan for communicating the progress on these standards will be ready by school year twenty-five, twenty-six. So it's in progress. Takes a while to get a course, you know, through the channels, but it is there. Would every school be exposed to that? Until I get that plan, I don't, I don't have that answer. And they're dealing it in the K through eight, so it would be more middle school than high school. High school doesn't have financial. Well, the high school math is working as part of the plan. But since they're just beginning the scope of that, I, I don't know what that would look like. There was a question about can students access a different pathway for a subcherry such as physical, physical education or art? The response that I'm gonna say is no. I have to do an assurance every year. I just finished it a couple weeks ago. I have to submit to the Agency of Education, as known as the Superintendent Assurances. And here's one of the assurances that I have to sign off that is happening. Can I assure that all students in grades nine through twelve are provided with one and a half years of physical education or the equivalent of thereof? And can I, can I, can I assure that the student learning done in that flexible setting occurs under the supervision of an appropriately licensed educator? So simplified, the question was like, so you're playing a sport. Can that count for phys? Under those standards and assurances, the answer would be no, unless the coach also happens to be a properly licensed educator for what they're doing. So under the way the assurances are with the state of mind, I would not be able to check that assurance. All pathway options must be under the supervision of an appropriately licensed educator. So I would say, like you say, someone was taking yoga or dance or art lessons privately. Could that substitute for that class? My interpretation of that standard would be no. The SBSU pathway process is followed if a student requests the opportunity to experience learning through a flexible pathway. So that would be, there is that possibility under flexible pathways, which in my opinion, is not as flexible as it should be, but. And another question, when will we learn about how each school will work towards their updated continuous improvement plan goals for twenty-four through twenty-seven? So the Agency of Education granted its final approval of all our continuous improvement plan goals yesterday, June seventeenth. We received those. The principal will be sharing strategies to reach those goals at one of our early fall meetings. There was also questions about the SBSU exit interview process overview and turnover rate statistics. The director of HR was not able to be here this evening, but I do have some information to share on that. But I mentioned at last month's meeting, used to do physical interviews, but it's just, it wasn't sustainable. And for how many employees, well over nine hundred employees in this, in the SU. So I asked the HR director to look at alternatives, what other industry standards, industries of our size, of number of employees do. A lot of it's exit surveys. So we contracted a company that sends out to do exit surveys. So previously, the model was for exit interviews conducted by the Director of HR. It was not mandatory, and participation was roughly averaging thirty percent a year for exit interviews. So that resulted in as many as forty exit interviews being conducted each year across all the districts of the SBSU. Called for the collection and plea of individual questionnaires through the interview, but it was not an efficient model. That's why we went exploring alternative methods. We use an organization called Upbeat. Started with them in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Upbeat provides various engagement retention and exit interview solutions for K through twelve school districts. I've met with them with the Director of HR when we did the prostitute. They're made up of former educators and administrators who base their product and solutions on extensive research conducted by Brown University. They focus on teacher and staff retention. To minimal cost was, I'm gonna say, maybe fourteen thousand, here is it?
Eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred, so it's even less than I thought. And so this goes, this is now a confidential third party that the interview goes to. They email out to, we, HR provides Upbeat with the individuals who are leaving us, and they get asked, you know, they get an email that they want to participate in it. Though we still always have individual exit interviews available through the Director of HR if an employee requests. So our goal is to mitigate the actual physical interviews as much as time for a savings of time. With the conclusion of each year, Upbeat meets with myself and the HR director to review the school's data and help identify specific areas of strength and weaknesses. In comparing the SU's data to those of other Upbeat clients across twenty-five states that they service, they currently have thirty-three thousand teachers nationally, according to their, their statistics. So this allows us to identify areas where improvement is needed, as well as place that information in a national context, not just what's happening. So we are just completing our second full year with Upbeat. We're focusing on increasing participation. We're currently sitting at forty-two percent participation rate with Upbeat. So that we want more participation, so that our data set can be as large as possible. And this also will allow us to break down data by school building. And this also will allow us to break down data by school building more easily as there is a minimum data set needed before an individual be, uh, uh, the first year that we did it, we didn't get individual meetings, individual schools' results because it could too closely identify, just like those who are familiar with our, our standardized test scores, they have to be a certain size, sub group, or we can't publish results because it could possibly identify students. Small subset in this, but identifying employees. So other relevant of what we've tracked is our annual turnover. Let me get back to, before getting to turnover rate. So after discussing this with the Director of HR, we feel we, we have not even seen the data for this year. We won't get it until probably late summer, early fall. But Upbeat will give us the data of anybody who did this year's interview. That'll give us two years of information, which then HR Director is feeling confident that he can come back and give a generalized report to the boards of what we're seeing from these exit interviews. So Nick, as you know, is, you know, he's pleased to do that, so I have every reason to believe that we will see that. We also track turnover rate. We have reliable data for the school years of twenty-eighteen, beginning in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen and beyond that. No, the rates over the past five years are as follows. For the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, you had a fourteen percent turnover rate. Twenty-one, twenty-two, fifteen percent turnover rate. Twenty-twenty-one, a ten point oh three percent turnover rate. Twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, ten point five. Twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, twelve point two. Turnover rates can be important indicators for us, but they got to be placed in the large context of trends in the educational finance sector, state and nationwide. Very, various resources that we use to track teacher turnover puts the, the, like University of Massachusetts Global Study, puts the annual teacher turnover rate nationally at sixteen percent. The Center for Educational Statistics supports that eight percent of teachers at public schools leave the profession each year, while another eight percent move to a different school totaling again a sixteen percent turnover rate. One study cited the annual teacher turnover rate is more than double for schools designated for Title One funding. And we are the largest receiver, the SU is the largest receiver of Title One funds in the state of Vermont. So nationally, that is also an indicator for a high turnover rate. So as you can see, we, I, I think we've, because the way we can generate data, I think it's vast improvement using the Upbeat system. Clearly, it's, we're getting more responses. Can't force anybody to partake and we'll tell you, we are below the national average on turnover rate. But there's, there's impact from those turnover rates, you know, hiring new staff every year, training new staff. So I would put it on a future agenda for that's a report of how it's being done, but I'd like to put a report on a future agenda that actually, after we have our sit down with with the vendor, that we want to use information that can be compiled and shared with the board. So that's what I have for, for questions from last month's board.
I just, I missed the twenty, 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 twenty-four.
Three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two or?
Twenty to twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one, ten point zero three.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yep. Yep.
A clarification, I was just trying to understand that. The chat, when you talk about physical education, one and a half years that each student is supposed to have.
Assurances that I have to sign off on.
Right. And I don't know why it happened. That other avenues to acquire, needing that requirement is in place right now as opposed to saying that they actually was in the phys ed classes, is that, we had questions.
Well, there could be other avenues, but if that other avenue, that flexible setting occurs, the second part of that is I have to check a box to say that they are under the supervision of an appropriate licensed educator while they're doing that flexible pathway.
Right. It's, it's, I guess it's unbelievable. I met a parent that was in our industry nineteen ninety-four that went through that same process and I assured her that today she would not be faced with the problem that she had back then of not meeting that requirement in terms of physics. So thank you. And I just wanted to make, say that out here, whether she's watching that or not, we are fixing problems. And she thought that was a problem for her, it was a problem for her back then, but we have fixed that problem.
I got some questions tonight that I will try to answer. And hopefully by our next meeting, I'll introduce you to our equity administrator, Title Nine, Orkin. Any other questions? Okay, item seven on the agenda is Spennelli Field upgrades to project. Upgrades project, sorry. Item A, set public informational hearing date and time for the question there. Renee, would you mind taking us through?
Yes. So with the board decision to put this out to vote again on September tenth, there's a series of things we're required to do. Of course, we have to warn it. We found the agenda to warn this evening, but as part of that warning, we also have to identify when a public informational hearing will be held, which is required to be done within ten days preceding the vote. So Amy had reached out last week, I believe, to kind of poll everyone to see when we might be available either the fourth or fifth of September, Wednesday or Thursday evening. I think from the folks that responded back, I think either night seemed to work. So what my, my plan is tonight, if we decide on what the date is and if we're going to have a Zoom option, I can generate that Zoom link. I will update the documents kind of on the fly. So as we go through the next couple of agenda items, I will update that with meeting information and then I'll print it for everybody to sign, right? We'll get the updated versions, of course, on the website. Once we have this set, we'll get it over to the district clerk or recording, that's Cassie Barbo. And by statute, she has to basically work with the other town clerks to have the warning posted no fewer than thirty, no more than forty days before the vote. And then there's also a series of publications that we have to go through. So first thing we need to do is set that meeting and then I can.
So I think I, I heard you say there was no real consensus. It was pretty much equal that both would work either the fourth or fifth. So that would be.
The Wednesday, Wednesday tends to be a pretty typical night for us to meet. It is the first Wednesday, so we won't have any conflicts with other boards. We do have the option of having it here, which might be a little bit easier if you, if you want to have the remote option. We did do that the last time. The blue seats are, we've set up to have, you know, kind of the, the back and forth, but I think it worked okay. But we had only fourteen members of the public in attendance, so it wasn't an overwhelming show of public support or instant, but we certainly have space here. If we found that this room ended up getting full, we can have overflow in the other room if there was a Zoom option.
Okay.
As well, so.
So we need to, question about the date.
A question about the format for the meeting. Is there the opportunity to have additional educational meetings before that? Because I know that someone mentioned having it at the field, hosting meetings at the field.
There was actually, I think, two or three meetings prior to the last vote, but as far as statute goes, we're just and with the public informational hearing, it is a board meeting. So you have to have a forum and it does have
We have to provide electronic access.
And then last time Steph opened it and turned it over to the head honker chair.
I think.
So we better have it Wednesday. So that, the, the item A is to set a public informational hearing date. I think I'm hearing that Wednesday, September fourth is the best all-around date to do that. May I have a motion to set the date for Wednesday, September fourth for the public information hearing regarding Spennelli Field? Motion by Kristen. Second. Second by Beth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Great, so.
Time.
Oh.
What time we want to do it?
Oh, six P M? Six P M, it's our normal meeting time. So it will be September fourth at six P M, for clarity for a minute. Item B is necessary resolution.
So the necessity resolution, which has been updated. So basically, the board had adopted this document prior to the vote back in March. Essentially, it's basically outlining that the board had decided that this project is necessary. We can't fund it through the general fund, we do need to borrow for it. This has been updated to recognize that we already put it out to vote once it was defeated. So again, this is just the legal requirement, so we need the board to adopt this again. And also part of the necessity resolution identifies the form, the general form of the warning and also what the ballot will look like. I have updated the actual warning, which is the next item on the agenda with the actual polling locations and so just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, so the, need a motion to adopt the necessity, necessity resolution as was in the packet.
So votes?
Motion by Kristen, second. I think it was in the packet, I missed it, but was it in the?
Yeah, the necessity resolution, yeah. And so it's a document and then as part of that is the warning and the ballot.
Okay. So we have a, a motion and a second by Leon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Staying in this Spennelli Field upgrades project, we have item C, which is special meeting warning.
It's not, we said we were having it here. Just the blue seats, okay.
You did that.
It's a problem with doing this on the fly, like I didn't make sure I had everything in here. So the special meeting warning, again, the general form is included in the board packet. What will be different for what I'm asking the board to actually approve right now and sign is that the document has been updated with the polling locations and times. They are the typical places, however, most of the times are slightly altered because it is going to be a one-question special election. North Bennington Greeted School District will be meeting at their typical village trustees office from ten to seven. Bennington Voters will be at the firehouse from ten to seven. Pownell is at the Pownell Town Office, ten to seven. Jacksberry is a little bit different, this time you're going to be at Cole Hall on Buck Hill Road from ten to seven. And Woodford is their normal location at the town building, they're actually seven A M to seven P M. So that has been updated in the warning. But again, I, I will print as soon as I get to Zoom link in here at the public informational hearing details. And of course, this will be, you're, you're accepting the warning, you're basically approving the warning tonight. Then it will get posted, it will be in the paper, it will be around towns, each of the member towns within that thirty to forty day window prior to the vote.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the special meeting warning for the Spennelli Field.
Stephanie.
Stephanie moved it.
Yeah.
Steph moved it, thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Katie, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Right, the last item in this category is item D, fundraising and sponsorship discussion.
So I had asked for this to be put on the agenda. One of the, in soliciting feedback during Mayfest, you know, one of the, the common comments was about, you know, and I think was about the community's desire to see us, you know, fundraising in, in conjunction with the, you know, fundraising or looking for grants in conjunction with asking the taxpayers for money. You know, we've, we've tried to clarify many times that like we can't go for grants until we have the, um, the approval from the district, you know, from the taxpayers of the district. But one of the things that we can do, or what I wanted to talk to the board about, and I kind of want to understand, one is are they, are we interested in this? And two, if we are interested, who, you know, who would decide? Are we interested in soliciting pledges for sponsorships for, for the Spennelli Field complex and the track? For capital improvements? Is that something that they, we would be interested? The, the reason I'm attracted to it is the idea that, you know, I could go out and, or any, you know, a, a group could go out and solicit these sponsorship pledges that would only come to us if, in the event that the, the vote passed, right? So that we're not in a condition in which we've accepted funds, either one, that the community could have used elsewhere. If, you know, if, because the fundraising pools are pretty small, I think, in our local community. And so like, I wouldn't want to take it and not be able to use it. And two, not create a condition in which we take funds that we, you know, won't be able to use according to the way that we've promised them to be used. So I didn't know whether people were open to the idea of soliciting pledges and sponsorships. And if we are, who, um, who would we work with in order to make the decision? Like what, what sponsorship opportunities look like, right? I don't feel like I'm a capable person to decide where sponsorships should go on that, in that complex. I think it's probably someone in the school or, you know, or is this a board question? I think that's my question to the board.
Is there any, is there any precedent that's been set for, set for something like this on in other areas? Other areas of the SU or of the S U, that have we done anything like that?
We really haven't had any big projects other than the energy improvements for the, the three Bennington Elementary Schools.
That you saw a public bunch, not.
Yeah, so we haven't solicited.
I like the, I certainly like the idea because I do think that it shows the, the good effort that we have said we would do. It shows us being proactive to, to say, hey, we've done it and it's here if we get this approved. It's a, you know, added incentive to, to the, to share with the voter to hopefully help help with the end result. Mechanics of which, I mean, I guess we could take away and do some research. Certainly don't object to the idea and it does show good faith initiative on, on board to solicit donations and not just have a total fall on, on to taxpayers. But we would have to do a little work on how we, what that would look like.
Is that something we would work with the, with, you know, you, Jim and Renee and then perhaps, you know, our, our?
Perhaps our attorney.
Yeah. And then maybe report back at the next meeting, I think. And then maybe report back at the next meeting. I think. Would that, does that make sense? I know we're going to have a compressed timeline, so then we'd probably want to hit the ground running after, if, if it did. Was possible, like to hit the ground running after the July meeting.
Does this also include possible grants that we could, we could be?
I mean, I think people are always looking out for grants. I think the challenge that we have is a lot of the grants. You know, at least my understanding, Renee, you could probably speak better to this, but like my understanding is like we, it's like a lot of things like you need a, you know, like you need. Like, we need the project in place to get the grants, right? What we're asking the taxpayers with this, with this very detailed, um, you know, ballot question that's prescribed by a legal. Is we're asking them to borrow up and up to that amount, right? And so we're, um, you know, our, if we could solicit grants after, that could reduce the amount of borrowing, it may not, I don't know, but. You know, that opportunity doesn't happen until the, the community decides that we can go ahead. That, is that accurate, Renee?
Yes. I think in most cases, yeah, like we, we need to have an approved project to. Go after any other money financing opportunities.
So was the action, um, Stephanie, is the action requested here to, to? For the board to essentially authorize the, the work that you're, that you suggest putting in and coming back to, back to the board with at the. The next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, that would be my, I don't even know if we need an action that, like, but I, I wanted to get a feed, like feedback and if. From both Jim and the board to see if this is the direction we want to go in.
So is it as simple as a vote authorizing? The solicitation of donations, I. I have a blank.
The only thing I can think of is like, is there have, does there have to be separation of funds? Like donations came in prior to the vote. And it wasn't successful, those donations then returned.
Well, I think that was Steph's, Steph's concept was that it's not, we're not receiving the donation, we're, we're receiving a pledge for donation.
So there'll be no money, the money is contingent on the vote, yeah.
I think the part that I need clarity though, like in my pitch, like I think I've got a pitch that I've crafted in my head. And what I need clarity though is like part of, you know, receiving like either asking um an institution or somebody for long, you know, some duration of sponsorship. I need to tell them what, like what benefit they would get, like whether it be signage and that, or like it, you know, like sponsorship for like. Um, you know, and I don't feel, you know, that's something that I feel like the district should have control over, right? Like I wouldn't want anybody deciding to solicit sponsorship promise like their name on the sign, right? If that's not what the district wants. So I think what I'm trying to understand is who? Is the, does the board want sponsorship of this? Like area of the facilities and if so, like who, how do we go about figuring out who, like what that looks like?
Are you thinking about a tiered structure, Stephanie?
I.
Giving structure?
Um, I'm open to anything. I mean, in, you know, I know that we have a really short window. Ideally, I'd like, you know, to uh ideally, if we could look for like one to five. Larger donations to come in before, you know, to try, like to start working on to try, like pledges that we want to start working towards. You know, um, and, and like just being able to tell them what that represents. For like if we did pass it, um, I feel like that is a decision that should be, I mean, personally, I think it's a decision that should be made either by the superintendent or the. Civil facilities or some, how they, or the board as a whole is how we want to, to brand the, you know, have the field. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I, as you're talking, I'm, I'm envisioning. Um, the hu, the hill that goes up to the, to the track level that everybody walks up every time they, they enter and exit the facility. That, that there's a thirty foot section of that that is bricked. And people are, people are able to buy bricks like they did for a second.
It's the Scott magnetic gate because you donated to that. Yeah, but I, I think Stephanie, I don't think anything's probably off the table. Other than naming rights of the track and the field because those are already, already done.
Yeah.
Yeah. The uh banners. The Mulligan bleachers has a great ring to it.
They only win the.
Yeah, the concession stand, the. But yeah, the entryway is a great, you know, a great way, so. I think you could get creative. I mean, let's face it, private schools do this very well. Uh, you'll see, you'll see that and they, they have tiered levels of donations. I don't know if we have time, like we would need. But I'm trying to term that, right, like a funding.
It's a capital campaign, right? And like what, and largely we don't have time for that, so I, what I think. And I don't think that the, that doesn't mean we couldn't do something like a tiered, thoughtful tiered sponsorship in the future. You know, like once the bond, like once we've had the past vote, I think what um.
Now, we just want to generate, I like to actually suggest what that number is at each tiers.
Right.
At each tier.
Yeah, I mean, like. Institution.
Thousand.
Right, right.
I'm trying to think, I know I went through this with Tim Brown. For a long time and I know we got something out there because we have other people that donate to the school. And do things out here. And so in terms of a policy, I just can't pull up something, but there is. Whether they were just in, in the A D's area, but there is some restrictions and guidelines for how. You want to be managing um funds because you, what, what he said, you don't want to piss off the people that have been donating new funds all the time. It's because you want to do something big and then they get smacked out. And I think part of it came up with the fact that we kind of get a school board and the co company or Pepsi or somebody and said, we'll put it all up if you just. Let us do this and do that and so forth along that line and, and it, and it didn't go there as well. And so um there is some concern about how you're going to manage that.
And there, and there is concern, I know we've run into it with some other issues at the high school on sponsorship of. But do you consider an appropriate sponsor because of the business that it is?
Right, right. This, this was a question that just, you know, got me right off the.
Probably not going to call it the Bud Light Arena. But um, you know, the, the county annual calendar, it has had some. Issues with sponsors that.
Yeah.
Uh, what they were selling would actually like violate the student handbook code.
Right.
Does it make sense to? Is it, does it make sense to the, to the group to have like more research put into it and presented at the next meeting?
I think the board authorized that they want to do this, then the Spinelli Field Committee is already meeting and organizing. I think it would be, if we could ask them to that. Wrap something going forward, what they think this looks like along with what Leon is saying and what I'm saying about what. What are the bumpers that we might need to have to put in place for?
Particularly since other, you know, members of the medical center have already come forward and tried to approach the board. To express interest in sponsoring. This in some capacity.
So what, what I think, what I, what I would ask of the board then is to do just that and, and um. Authorize at a vote, we, what we'll need is an author, a motion to authorize uh the. The due diligence and research for a pledge slash fundraising opportunity to help. With the funding of the Spinelli Field project.
To the authorized Spinelli Field Committee to do that.
And to authorize the Spinelli Field Committee or any subcommittee.
Yep, administrative.
Administered by the Spinelli Field Committee.
Or board.
Um, to, to do just that.
You will go to check with our.
Yes. Because it could be ta, you know, like tax donations, so we would have to.
I was going to say, they're going to want to know that it's a five oh one C three.
Right.
Right.
Well, we, we're not a five oh one C three, but we're, it's.
Political stuff. Of the state of the moment.
So does that mean if we're not funding, that's how, that's how.
It depends on the individuals and their status, so it's really for their tax.
Okay.
Correct, and like perhaps they might in, you know, if it's a sponsorship, perhaps that's advertising, you know, I mean, it depends on what. How, it really depends on how people are looking at it, so.
Okay, so would that, that would certainly be something, because, because there's people probably in town that have donated to. One field and now they're talking about a second one just further to the north and that is.
Right.
That is a five oh one C three. Right?
That also has the benefit of some private public school funds, so um, yes, I think it, it does, it is for the individual.
Fusion.
Yeah, right, the, the benefits of both worlds. Uh, it is the, um, you know, I think it is the. The, the donor, individual donor's responsibility to have conversations with their tax preparer. Not, not.
Speaking as a tax accountant or as a board member, what you said?
Well, I am not advising anyone what this is.
Okay, um, so could we get a, a mo, uh, uh? We get a motion?
So.
And a second?
Can we just reword that?
Sure. A motion to authorize the Spinelli Field Subcommittee to research. And. Perhaps and implement.
Yep.
A fundraising slash fundraising or sponsorship pledge. Pledge is the key word, program to help offset the costs. That might be incurred by this Spinelli Field Upgrade Project. Okay.
Spinelli Complex. Spinelli Complex, just to, just to make sure it's not just the field and the track, like the whole package.
Field the end, yeah, the field upgrades project.
Yes.
Field the track. So we have a motion.
Yes.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
We need to end Spinelli.
Yes, I talked to Mike Malloy today. I suggested. I'd like to see a handout that says, let's compare. Here's the cost of grass and the mowing and the fertilizing and every other thing we can think of. And here's the few games we can play on it. And here's the cost of a bond and it's spread out over the years of the bond. And here's the number of activities we can play on it, something that we could hand people and say, here. This is what you're voting on, this is what you got and what you could have. I think I've been looking forward to a handout and I would like to see.
Like a one page handout that.
Yeah.
Good feedback and I think it's something that um the, the Spinelli Field Committee, I know it's, I know that's a message they've heard. Uh, and I think it's something that we can definitely. If, if they're running into any roadblocks and getting that grade, it's something we can help. It should help with, so I, I agree. If you have, if you have thirty seconds with somebody in a elevator, what do you want them to know?
How to get out?
That might be at the end of your thirty seconds. Um, administrators report, so we don't have, uh, tonight, we don't have a student representative. Uh, we don't have uh the high school principal or the middle school principal, so we can skip over that. So now we're on to uh committee reports, which, are there any committee reports? Chairs report. Steph, did you have anything to?
No, I, I'm this evening, Scott, if you have something, you're welcome, but.
Um, I.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter of congratulations to our two school softball coaches. Second year in a row they've gone to the finals, uh, had a great season. And uh Remington, one of our coaches is retiring. And I'd like to see if we could thank her for her services and uh they did a great job.
Who's the other coach?
It's right there.
Thanks.
And maybe we could verbalize the thanks to all those prior people who uh organized the parade when our girls went north. That was quite nice.
All right, uh, chairs, sorry, chairs report. Um, I don't, I, I don't have anything to. Much to add other than two things. I meant to say this when we were on consent item, consent agenda. Um, I did notice when I was reading the last minutes. Katie, your name was spelled wrong all the way through that, all the way through it. At least it was consistent, but it was. No, eight, eight.
Oh, eight, my last name.
Um, so just wanted to call that out for Richard, just for future, future minutes to make sure that that gets corrected. Um, and then the other thing is, is I, I uh did, it was mentioned in the last meeting, but um board chairs from, from. All the boards within the S U got together. Um, Steph, Nicole Whalen from Arlington, myself, Chris Murphy. Uh, we all got together, we talked about goals. Um, for the S U overall, how that trickles down to goals for individual boards. Um, how that, that reaches out, uh, spreads out and works toward goals for administration, which can work toward individual building goals. Um, as noted in Jim's um uh report today, um, the, those goals that were established by, established. With the state were just um. Just approved yesterday. Um, I think Lauren got the final wording on them, on money of them today. So um continued efforts at both the S U level and with, in partnership with the board chairs. Um, to, to help make that happen so that we can work as a board towards, toward the common goals that, that. Um, both work down toward the students and all the way up to the, to the administration. Um, I'll be on a, on a comment. Heading in a common direction. Um, and I'm, I'm excited for that work. I am excited to be able to roll it out and I'm excited to see where, where it takes each individual board um in partnership and collaboration with. Um, the S U overall. So we're helping there. Uh, and then last on the agenda, right, is the uh, is F Y I, there's a campus report. And student enrollment report in the packet and I believe. That exhausts our agenda for the evening. Have a motion to adjourn.
All right, uh, doing the nominations. Do what supports are in place for employees with provisional teaching?
Um, supports that keep, they get their license kept?
Yes.
Yeah.
I need to make sure that they're.
At all, a lot of it centers around the H, H R and um. That's where the request with provisional goes through them. List of who is on provisional licenses and. My hope that they're all getting frequent check-ins with someone who's on provisional license so that we can assure that they're successful.
Any questions?
Question is what supports are available for teachers with provisional teaching licenses? So often times that happens when someone has content area knowledge, but not any coursework in teaching?
No, no pieces are part of the country. Uh, we see that they're part of a cohort group that meets. Right, we hear all the new teach, all new teachers go through that, so they get support for that.
All new teachers, like my garden, except their licenses.
Yeah, there's a cohort group. And we'll be doing a, and every summer we do a new teacher workshop, so. We have the dates for August for those, all the subjects we're hiring at the bell, but, and then they'll get, then they join that cohort group that meets monthly.
Motion to adjourn. By David, or second by Leon, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, abstentions? Great, thanks, everybody.
Yep.
You think is adjourned at seven oh ninety?
Yeah.